Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's special called meeting for Thursday, January the 14th, 2021. First of all, we would like to say that these meetings create a lot of anxiety for a lot of people, parents, teachers, staff, and board members alike. So I'm just going to go through just a couple of issues and items that have had, that have taken place, that have made this special call meeting to be requested. But first, I would like to just call the meeting to order, and I would like to ask that the, to get a motion for the agenda to be adopted as presented.
So move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Who's second? Okay. So I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell and a second by Ms. Adcock. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. I would also like to recognize that, recognize that all the board members are here in person. We are socially distanced, we have masks, with the exception of Ms. Carpenter and Mr. Farr, who are with us on conference call. Ms. Carpenter, will you say that you are present and also Mr. Farr?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, Carolyn.
I am President Allen Buffon.
Great, thank you. So item number three, the header says, "Preparing for Opening in Plan B on January the 19th, 2021." So the first statement that I would like to make on behalf of the board is, this is a meeting about transparency tonight. This is what the community asked for, and this is exactly what we need to have happen tonight. This was not a meeting that was called about changing our plans or our thoughts for our reopening process on Tuesday, January the 19th. We will reopen in Plan B. A couple of things that need to be stated is, we have some, or need to recognize, we have a lot of phenomenal teachers that have worked very hard to work, to make any plan that we have been placed in, Plan C, Plan B, just whatever that plan was at the current time, work. They've been through some really hard challenges. We recognize that, we understand it. We, we try to be, as a board, as supportive and as encouraging as we possibly can with the staff, with Dr. Louder and his staff. There is a lot of back and forth that goes on with what that just means. You know, I think everyone has a different perspective when we're addressing either plan, our perspectives in life and our life situations, be it if you're a staff member, a teacher, a parent, or a student. And at this point in time, we truly thought Monday night, we all left this room with a really good plan and a good compromise. We were unsure of what would take place with Governor Cooper's statements that were going to be made on Tuesday, so therefore Plan A was not really addressed. But we felt good that the prior motion and plan that the board had already put in place with Plan B to start on January the 19th was still a good place to be. We always know that we are having to react when the state does something different, i.e., Mecklenburg County did something different today. Those are going to happen. None of us asked for these processes to take place that are reactive to different situations when numbers are extremely high, when things are changing and moving and parts are just taking place almost day to day. But we have to react to it as a board and as a collective board, and we cannot have seven different opinions to give the superintendent and/or the staff seven different directives. So that is why we have to act as a board in a unified fashion. However, it was very disappointing to leave this building, and all of a sudden, our phones start blowing up, our emails start blowing up, screenshots start coming through, media responses that all of a sudden, we were hearing, and not that this reflects on everyone, and we want you to hear that, we understand that this is not a reflection of everyone, but could possibly be a very serious situation, that there was some petitions being placed out there for teachers and/or staff to do a call-out sick on Tuesday. That is extremely concerning to the Board of Education, and I'm sure just as concerning to Dr. Louder and his staff. We already have a critical situation, as we know, with certified teachers being in classrooms, because that's what we are mandated by law. We are mandated by law to have certified teachers in these classrooms for these kids once they're there to be supervised. That can cause a lot of problems. It starts causing a lot of problems with our substitute pools, you know, it throws us a complete curve of how we're already trying to manage that situation. You know, and I kind of equate it, and this may sound like it's a minimize, but you know, if somebody calls in and said someone's going to burn a house down, and that never happens, everybody's happy. But if that house burns down, everybody wants to know why you didn't take the threat serious. You know, that may be a little harsh, but at some point in time, we really have to take a look at what's going on out there. And it was disappointing for us, you know, we felt like we walked away with knowing that the one of the biggest concerns was social distancing, because that's what they had a concern with Plan A. That we know that with these, the surveys that went out and the numbers that came back, that social distancing in Plan B is definitely doable. So we all, we all left thinking we had, had done a really good job compromising. I want this meeting tonight to be held very professional. There's a lot of emotion on both sides, and probably more than two sides. You know, we have parents, we have teachers, we have board members, we have staff, so there's a lot of emotion in this. But I want everyone to be able to say what they need to say. I want them to say it in a very professional manner, a very respectful manner, because respect is given and received on both sides completely in a different manner, and I, and I get it, some people are more emotional about, about how they make their statements than others, and that's not always well-received. But I want everyone to be able to say what they need to say and to do it in a very professional manner. We also want the, want the teachers to know that we have, we have ensured as much as possible to return them to a very safe environment. Many agencies, including the health lines here, has confirmed that, and I think Dr. Louder will also confirm that. We are on meetings every Monday with the leaders of Cabarrus County, and we hear all the numbers that happen and that it changed place with percentages and positives and cases. But one of the first things we hear is what a great job Cabarrus County Schools has done in ensuring that there is a safe environment for teachers to return and for children. So with that being said, I'm going to open up the floor for discussion, and I'm just going to let each person take their turn to make their statements. We're going to have a really good discussion about this, and then this board will decide if there's any other action we need to take tonight. And I would like to begin with Ms. Adcock.
Thank you, Chair Grimsley. I just want to start by thanking Dr. Louder and the school team for putting together the parent-teacher surveys in such a quick manner, turning it around so quickly and getting it back to us. And it's really a privilege to work with such a dynamic and energetic team. I mean, we could not perform our roles as a board member without you, Dr. Louder, and the school really supporting us. I really want to talk about change, because I think that we're in a very different time, and change of any kind, whether it is purposefully planned or pushed upon us by circumstances, is hard. Change can produce fear, frustration, and anger, because some of what we have known to be normal is gone, and that can be a normal response. But once we accept the change, that's when we can look for opportunities to evaluate, create, and incorporate something different and something new. And that's how things get changed. They don't get changed when we stay stuck in that anger or we stay stuck in our frustrations. But we need to really be respectful when we don't agree on things, and I think that we see that everywhere in all kinds of places today. But communication is key, is important, and it has to be encouraged to continue, because the value of feedback that we get from our school system team, our parents and our community at large, is more important right now than at any time that we've ever known. After going through thousands of comments on these surveys, I have to say that I think that there's some information that was gleaned from that. I would like to see us have a better process to evaluate our feedback, something that helps us to really look at ways that we can get those comments without having to do that tedious work. I had a chance to really sit down and go over the comments and look for trends, and some of the things that I thought that were interesting to me, that I just wanted to bring to light, was that under the comments for Plan C, there seemed to be two really populations in that, one was that they were afraid of the virus and did not feel safe to enter the schools. The other was one where the teachers felt like that they did not have time to teach remote and in-person in Plan B and in Plan A, that they felt like that was twice the work. I also heard substitutes were another issue in the comments, and I think those kinds of, that information is what we, as a board, need to look at, and we need to know, because, you know, in this time of change, I think we all need to realize that we should give each other the ability to accept failure, that if we try something, that it's not failure if it doesn't work, that we can try something different. And I think we all need to give ourselves that opportunity to see this time as a period of growth and learning. And I'm just very proud of the school system, I'm proud of our teachers, I'm proud of everything that we do here, and I know this is a stressful and tedious time, and I'm just here for the, to listen and to make decisions based off of data. And I just appreciate the opportunity to come tonight and to speak about this.
Thank you. I would like to go to Mr. Farr next, please.
Yes, thank you, Hala. First of all, I'd like to apologize for not being there in person. I'm on my last day of being quarantined for COVID. I had some vertigo issues and had a fight with the, with the floor and got a swollen shut eye, but other than that, I'm, I'm in good shape. And, and you know, it's kind of frustrating to me with, with some of this, because, you know, this is my third term on the board. I first came on the board in 2008, and through the years, I worked really hard down there earning respect, and it's especially from teachers. And, and seemed like just, and it's what's going on in the world. Unfortunately, I've been at home and been watching news and seeing what's going on in the House and the Senate, and it's the same thing that is, that's happening in Cabarrus County. And so, you know, I went from one time being the common sense board member, the, that's the way I was thought of, a person with a voice, a reason, I mean, I heard all that stuff for two terms, and all of a sudden, I'm, I'm the devil. And, and I, and guess what? I haven't changed one bit. I'm still doing the same things I've always done, still working hard for the kids at Cabarrus County and teachers at Cabarrus County. But it's, you know, it's frustrating that, you know, we get things sent to our house, which is inappropriate, that's kind of crossing the line. And, you know, I'm, I'm a former high school football coach. I was on a staff at one time that we won, we won two games in four years. I was, you know, I was talking about myself, so I can take criticism, that's not a big deal. But just because that we don't agree with each other, that don't mean we're not giving everything we can and trying to do what's best for, for every person that's associated with the school system. You know, you think about it, we, we are concerned with, with students, number one, you know, staff and parents. So, you know, we got, we got three groups of people right there that we, we have to take in consideration on any decision we make, because it affects, it affects their lives, and we take that seriously. But I think there's board policy, I think that, I guess we'll talk about tonight, that, that talks about some of this stuff, so I think we can clear some of it up. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll start with Ms. Sandage.
I've received several emails, and they are from varied opinions, and I just want to thank everybody who's taken the time to write to this board, everyone who's taken the time to give us suggestions and try to work alongside us, because we know we're all in trying times. And I joined this board to be a part of a community that worked together, and that's what I intend to do in this position. So I'm going to read just a few of the responses that I've sent back to folks who have reached out to me. "I truly want us to move away from this negative wave and begin to develop a culture of trust and unity. Some of the emails that I've received are truly disheartening and assuming in nature. I have never met an enemy, because I start with how I can help, I meet people where they are in life, and I don't assume anything, and I try my best to find out how we can meet in the middle somewhere. I've been on all fronts of this pandemic at times. The fact of the matter is, people aren't staying at home and aren't social distancing because they can't or won't, and that's not my job to find out why. It doesn't matter if the schools are open or closed. We have to address the root of the problem, and that shouldn't start with closing down our school buildings for in-person learning. Our governor and his medical staff equally feel schools should be open. Personally, I feel the safest place in our community is our schools. My family contracted COVID, and my child wasn't even in school, hadn't been there since March of 2020. January 19th will be my child's first day back into the building. My husband is high-risk, and that was truly a scare for all of us, so I can relate to the fears of teachers and staff in our buildings. In our schools, I know we are sanitizing. I know our high-risk staff are being given accommodations, I know we are social distancing, I know we are masking, and I know our children are being supervised in their learning. I don't know these instances are occurring in our homes and in our community. As I've stated many times before, I want everyone to have a choice on what works best for their family, but if that isn't possible, how close can we get to that as a district? So now I have a question for you. Since we are already going back into B, how can we make B the best, the best extent possible? How can we make B work to the best extent possible? Please share any suggestions that you may have. So I urge this community to please. I have offered my phone, I have offered my email, I have made my social media, my personal social media pages public. Send me your suggestions. The only way this works is if we do it together and we figure out a way to make it work alongside of one another."
Thank you. Mr. Walter.
Thank you. I actually appreciate all the comments that have been made before, especially Ms. Adcock talking more about the surveys. I think we neglected a little bit on Monday to really go into some of that survey and comments, and I've, I've heard some feedback on that. And also, I don't think we've really done a great job of being transparent on exactly how we reached our decision. I think we've done a much better job of that this evening. I mean, teachers, there, I've seen it, and you've all, you've all seen it, teachers are worried and concerned, especially those that, that have underlying health conditions. It appears to some folks that we're ignoring those concerns, and I don't think that's the case, case. But we do need to do a better job of explaining how we are addressing those concerns. And then really, it comes down to context and how best to reach out to the board, your board members. Some things have gone, I guess have not been completely appropriate, but is it best to use email? I think email is appropriate to get, to get all the board members, and we have public comment time every month set aside for the public and employees, anybody who wants to come talk to us, can talk to us. How many showed up on Monday about this issue? Zero. So I would encourage people, if that's, if this is such a concern and you want to get in front of us and get your, your thoughts out, please come talk to us. And I, and again, we've got well over 200 emails, there are lots of concerns out there. I do think we just need to be more transparent, like we have tonight, to explain our decision-making. Thank you.
Ms. Blackwell.
So I'm grateful to have this meeting tonight, thankful for just all of the wonderful statements that you guys have made already so far. I think we definitely all want to work together the best way as possible to make sure that we are doing the best job that we can. I have received many, many emails that have been very positive and said that they know that we are doing a hard job, and they appreciate all of the work that we have done. I'm always happy to receive those, but I'm also happy to receive the ones who give suggestions and don't agree with what we say. Hearing other people's opinions about what we're doing is, is something that I thrive on, because it makes me think, you know, is this the right way? Do I feel the same way? Is this going to change my opinion on something or my mind? And so that always is fine with me. But what I will not and do not tolerate is some of the nasty, mean, hateful emails that I have received. I've received mail that was addressed to ignorant Blackwell. I have seen social media posts that have completely put information out of context that was not true regarding me and my family. And there has to come to a point where if that is being done, then those that are doing that need to be held accountable. And so I think we have gone through months and months of trying our best to make sure that we find the best solution for everyone. My children are in school, they're struggling virtually. We all certainly want to get these children back in school safely. There are studies that have come out even just recently regarding, you know, so there was a UNC-Duke study that found that 32 cases of in-school transmission among 100,000 students, that it's actually safer for them to be in school than it is for them not to be in school. The CDC has maintained that children should be in school. Dr. Fauci has made several statements about children needing to be in school. And so I think that at this point, we have seen that the numbers in Cabarrus County have not been spread through school contact. And I said Monday, is it possible that maybe these children being in a controlled environment like school, because I have every faith in the world that Cabarrus County is doing the best job of making sure that the schools are clean, that they're maintaining the proper protocol? I think that my child is probably better, and most children are probably safer in school than anywhere else. And I've said that from the beginning, and I continue to maintain that same statement.
Thank you. Ms. Carpenter.
Yes, thank you very much. One of the things that I would like to state, there were a few things that we did not discuss Monday night, and I would like to make sure that we did get that on the record. One thing we did not discuss was our quarantine rate, which Monday night, it was the highest that had been of our employees and our students, and I would like to make sure we have that on the record. The other thing was that the, I think that we should have been made aware, and it should have thrown up a red flag for us to start with, when we had 63% of the survey that come back from our teachers that said, hey, we've got a problem here, and we, you know, we don't want to go back, and that should have thrown a red flag for us. And then with the parent survey, when it came back, it said the, it was over, you know, it was right at 50 to 58%, it was that they weren't really sure what they wanted to go to, you know, so there was some question with that. Also, now, the, the good thing is, right now, at the, at Monday's meeting, we were 18.4% and we had hospitalization at 114, and we have gone down, which is going in the right direction. We're at 16.4% right now with 112 hospitalizations, so we're going in the right direction, but we're still high. And those are things we have to consider. And we all need to make sure that we keep, that that was the indicators we said originally that we want to look at, and things have changed in the surrounding counties. Now, as I've always said, I respect every one of our members, and we have different thinking on what we think is important, what we don't think. I definitely want to see our children back in school, but again, I want to see it done safely, and we chose the metrics we wanted to use, and those were what we were wanting to go by. I respect our teachers, our staff, and our children, and I want to make sure it's done safely. The only thing that I had asked for when, and again, I was looking for a compromise. We know that the vaccinations are coming out, and today, they even upped what, what age group they were looking to vaccinate, so they are hoping to get more vaccinations out. And all I was asking for was a little bit of time so we could get those vaccinations into our teachers, and that would make our teachers feel more confident to go back into the classroom. And that was the only thing that I was asking for, to make sure we had a little bit more time to make that happen. And to get the, the vaccinations into our teachers and staff, because it was staff and teachers, our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers and things like that, and to make them feel more comfortable when they did go back to the face-to-face, and to extend that to the end of the month of January. And that was, that was one of the main reasons that I wanted to extend that time out a little bit. And you talked about compromise. That was a compromise to see that happen. We all, I think every one of us realized, virtual learning, it has its good points, it has its bad points, and some people thrive on it and other ones don't. But every one of us, every one of us have had to change our thinking, change a lot of things during this pandemic, things we would have never thought we would have to do, and that includes parents. It's things we never thought we would have to do, or a role we thought we would have to take, and we did have to take that role. I know I've heard a lot of you say, well, that's not a role that a parent should have to be taking. Well, these are very unpredictable times, and it's a role that we did have to take on, and it's because of the pandemic. Every one of us have taken on different roles right now, and unfortunately, that's the case. It's not a positive role we wanted to take on, but as parents, a lot of times, we have to do things we really maybe don't want to do, but we're parents, and we have to take on that role. And the teachers have done an outstanding job. They've taken on more responsibility than we, they ever thought they would have to do, and I think they've done an outstanding job, and we should say kudos to it. And I'm just so proud of them, of what they've done, and, and I think we should do whatever we can do. And I'm just, you know, I, I've got some, some real concerns, and again, I want to thank them for everything they've done, all our staff, the, you know, the bus drivers, the child nutrition, they've just done outstanding job, and I'm just, I'm just very proud of everything they've done. But I just, I think that we had the, the numbers and everything, and again, I would like to get those quarantine rates, because that was not mentioned Monday night, and like I say, they were the highest they've ever been. And I know that we have right now, I know with, there was one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, I can tell you right now, counties or school system that are all going virtually, and I won't go through all the numbers, but most of them, they're staying virtually through different rates, and I won't go the either 212 to 315, just different times, and I won't go through all those counties, but I do have that information that are staying virtually, and I do have all those counties and everything, but they are staying virtually because of where the rates are, and most of them, they are lower than what our rates are right now. But thank you so much for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. And we are working on a list of the surrounding districts of what plans they are in currently working, and we will definitely do that. The quarantine, I want to make sure, Ms. Carpenter, you did get that report correct, because it did come out.
Yeah, it came out, but I would like to make sure it's on the record what those numbers were. We got it, but we did not mention that in that meeting that night, because normally, we, we say something about it, what those numbers are, and I would like to make sure that is on the record, that what, what those numbers were that day.
Correct.
We didn't even, didn't even mention that, that night at the meeting, what those numbers were, because they, and like I say, I want to make sure people realize it was the highest they had ever been.
Right. And Dr. Louder, that's actually placed on the website, correct?
It's not right now, because the students aren't in class, so it, once students come back, then we'll start putting it up again after that, so it's not on there currently. When we went to Plan C, then we didn't put that, because people weren't coming in.
Okay, great.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
If we're going to look at the numbers in the school of staff and students, we also need to look at or add to that to make sure we could see contract tracing, because that, to me, suggests that these numbers are from what's happening in the building, and we need to understand- And we need to understand that that is or that isn't the case.
So, Ms. Andich, can you email that over, just as a second follow-up to our emails that we had today?
Sure. And I don't want us to do anything that we aren't doing already. Dr. Lauter, if you can answer that, are we already contract tracing to see if a staff or a student comes up positive for COVID, if they are quarantining because they are positive and it happened in the school, or if they're quarantining because they came into contact with somebody either at school or in their home or community?
Yeah, we work with the Health Alliance, who's, who's really the guide on the contact tracing. But as we've said before, there's, there's one case that we're not sure of if, where it's possible that it was transmitted at school, like a faculty member that may have transmitted it to another, we're not sure, but it's possible. Outside of that, we don't have any, we have one case where it's possible, but we don't have any other cases where it has transmitted at school. So for example, I think Ms. Carpenter mentioned the basketball team. So basketball team member gets, it comes with a positive. Well, then, we work with the, with the Health Alliance to determine, okay, well, now there was enough close contact that the whole team is quarantined. So there's only one positive there that came from outside of the school, but the whole team is quarantined because there were close contacts. And that's what we're, we've been doing since the very beginning.
I have one more question, I'm sorry. Some of the communication has been about our schools and our faculty not able to be socially distanced or provided with accommodations. And I just wanted to see if you could speak to that. The other thing that I was thinking too, if we want to show the community how, how safe our schools are, I want to make sure that that information is communicated on our website or wherever that might be. So are we able to guarantee six feet of social distancing? Are we able to guarantee that our staff have PPE and/or if a student comes to class without a mask, we're able to provide that to them? Can we just make sure what processes we have in place is somewhere? And that might already be the case.
And I know that we answered that question somewhat at some point in time, that we have plenty of PPE, and if they do show up at school without the appropriate, they are given the, whatever that is, a mask. Right, correct.
Yeah, and as I've said, to the credit of students and parents, that has been, what principals report is that's a, you know, almost non-existent, that people absolutely wear their mask. And if for some reason they forget or don't have it, then as you said, there's, there are masks on the bus, there are masks at school that are given out. So yes, they're given PPE.
So I want to start with just another round of discussion, and this just may take just a few minutes for us to get through this tonight, but I want to make sure that we're all clear on where we are. The reason there was so much concern for the meeting was because of this worry of a possibility of having an even greater shortage of teacher coverage on Tuesday. I think if that information had not been, been placed out there, everyone, that, that would, there would not have even been a question. But, you know, it's one thing to know people are unhappy with our decision, in whatever which way that went, but another that they're reacting to it in a way that may put us in even more disadvantaged or critical situation. And, you know, I wasn't going to do this, but I think this is one of the things that really bothers all of us. This is what I've heard from all of you, you know, during this past couple of days, that the general public doesn't get to really be a participant in. But, you know, getting an email that says it's sad, you know, that you're meeting because your feelings are hurt, or you're upset because of whatever, you know, that's disappointing to us, that people feel like we're just calling a special call meeting because our feelings are hurt. That is not the case. We deal with a lot of negativity, you know, we make hard decisions, and we make them a lot. And they, no matter which decision we make when we walk away, no matter which side we, we have to, you know, tether to, somebody's not happy. So we get that. But for people to understand, or think they do, that we call special call meetings because our feelings are hurt, or we're not happy with some things that we're being said, that is not the case. This is the case that we are trying to react and be, and be proactive to something that might take place on January the 19th, when those kids show up. That's, that's a very serious situation. You know, we want to make sure that there are plenty of teacher coverages. We, we've already been talking about teacher coverage and where we might be at this point in time with the substitute pool being a problem. So we want to make sure that Dr. Lauter and the staff are aware, because we normally are the ones that get that type of communication. You know, it's unfortunate, we know there are people out there that are unhappy with our decisions, and, and everybody makes emotional statements, and maybe those things get acted upon, or maybe they're not. But it's never to our advantage to ignore those and then something bad really happened. You know, a couple of years ago, when we had to close the schools for the Raleigh trip, you know, which in part was the right thing that we all had to do as districts, but that was for one day. You know, if we start having really serious shortages of teachers and classroom coverage, that's a different conversation. You know, it's, it's bothersome to us that, you know, we have policies that says, you know, employees shall not use internet postings to libel or defame the board, individual board members, students, or other school employees, you know, that there's consequences for that. But yet they ask for us to be, and, and with all, every right, for us to be respectful to them when we are communicating. And I think the majority of us try to do that. We all are in a very emotional state most of the time, we're very defensive. It's become a very divisive subject, no matter which sides you're on. But it's this board's decision to balance that and make the right decision. And the bottom line of that is to get these kids back in school. You know, I made some couple of statements today. I said, you know, our lessons learned, we should be where that is right now. You know, these kids have been out of school for 10 months, we've been dealing with this, we've dealt with Plan C, we've dealt with Plan A or Plan B, we have not gotten back to Plan A. You know, we do not have a real good plan for that, and that, and we all have to acknowledge that and be accountable for that. And that's where we need to get back to, that's where the task force will come into play. And, and, and that will be a great process for us to move forward, you know, with the Plan A and a future Plan A, if we ever need to do that, or transition between those. But for right now, when we start getting information that we may have some call-outs on a specific day in a mass number, or whatever that might look like, that's just really not something that we can ignore once we've been, we've been made aware of that. So at that point in time, I'm going to give all of you one more round, and then I would like to have some comments by Dr. Lauter, because we definitely want to make sure that the staff and the Board of Education are on the same page. And with that, I will start with Ms. Blackwell.
Well, I actually wanted to ask a question. So in regards to this potential plan to, to have teachers not show up on January the 19th, this has been posted on social media, on many different websites, discussions have been heard in personal situations from other teachers who have mentioned that they have been told to call out sick because they don't have any recourse to be able to have anything happen to them. We have screenshots of this information, this is not just hearsay. So my question is, what accountability are we going to put out there in order to make sure that this doesn't happen? And if it does happen, that these folks are held accountable for this? It, it blows my mind in a situation like this, when we already have so many things going on to, you know, for our children, for, for these parents that are trying to juggle work and teaching and making sure their kids are online, and are they going to pass this semester, and all of that, that we would even have this situation of people saying that they are not going to show up to work and they're going to call out sick and leave these children at school with nobody there to be with them. That's putting these children at risk. Parents then would have to go pick their kids up from school. What, what do we get to, like, what are the, what is that recourse? What does that look like? Dr. Lauter, Mr. Shaw, either one of y'all can answer this. I'm, I'm just curious to know what, if they do that, what is the recourse going to be for that?
Let me, let me jump in first. Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. This is Brian Shaw. Any response like that would first go to the administration for its recommendation and decision as to what, if anything, should be done. I think board policy and North Carolina law is quite clear that teachers cannot use a fake excuse for sick. They cannot call in sick if they're not sick. They cannot refuse to work. That would be considered a violation of professional responsibility in their number of policies. There's actually a North Carolina statute that prohibits public employees from striking, and that would endow any combination or agreement not to work. I sincerely hope that this, that never, it never gets to that, that our teachers, I think, certainly by and large, to the greatest extent are professionals. Emotions are high, we understand that. I'm hopeful that the comments that were made that would give concerns were more of the moment and emotional and do not express a sustained intent to actually violate the law and, and not show up. Violate the law could put students at risk as well. And the problem is, I, I think is that one doesn't know. Is that, is there a significant risk if that will happen, that there is not? If, if there was no risk of that happening, I think that could be, be dealt with on an individual basis if necessary. But I think the board members had legitimate concerns as to what the true risk was and wanted to have a discussion about that. But so again, there are rules and processes that would govern that. It would be up to the administration to take a look at each individual situation. Every possible discipline is always looked at individually. Teachers certainly have rights, they have due process rights, they would be accorded any due process rights. There are processes available, I hope we don't have to go there.
Dr. Lauter?
I guess if the, the question is, if the board has us in B on Tuesday, and it appears like that's what we're going to be in, then, you know, the expectation is our employees will be at work on Tuesday, and I trust that our employees will be there for our students. And if there's a problem or an issue, then, you know, principals will talk individually with their employees like they always have. So that, that generally is how any type of issue would be, as, as Mr. Shaw said, an individual issue that supervisors, which obviously principals are the supervisors of the building, will work with their employees.
Okay. Mr. Walter, I think we are next to you.
I'm still not sure what the question is, but it assumes that what Dr. Lauter said, it's his job to run the school system and to deal with these issues if they need board assistance, I'm sure he'd ask for it, but it's our job to make sure that schools are run well, not to, to deal individually with teachers.
Ms. Andich?
I just want to point out that, you know, I hate that we are here. And I truly respect every single position that there is here, and I keep saying this, I don't know how to say it any differently. I, I want us to be a unified front because we are stronger in that fashion. We get things accomplished in that fashion, and we create an environment for our children who are watching our every move to flourish. I understand, you know, we may be in a, an issue that, you know, none of us could have even prepared for, but we are here, and, you know, we've got to look to the future to put things in place that, again, just help our community to thrive. Because at the end of the day, you know, this is why we sign up for, for, for what we signed up for, for our children, for our community, for our families. And I just want us to keep that as the focal point. I, I don't, I don't know that I'm here to look at any punitive measures for our teachers because I understand, as you, you said earlier, Holly, you know, there's a lot of emotions here, and I respect that. And, you know, I just want us to, to move past it. And I've also kind of put myself out there, and I'll do this publicly now, to say, you know, I'm willing to be in that car rider line, you know, to help teachers, you know, see that we are women and men of our word. You know, we're asking teachers to go into schools when they feel like, you know, they're unsafe, we're asking students to go into school. And, you know, I'm sending my daughter on the 19th, and I'm willing to volunteer in a classroom or volunteer in a line somewhere, you know, just let me know. I'll say one more thing. It takes a village, and I love you all. I don't care where we're at, I love everybody.
Thank you. So Ms. Adcock?
I'd just like to say that I think amongst everything that's going on in our society, and, and when we look at this, we have to look at it, that everybody in the, on our earth, I mean, the whole world is going through what we're going through. And so we are not by ourselves, and we have more things in common than we have that are different. And what is our focus? I mean, why do we come to school? Why are, why is CCS here? And that one focus is our kids. We would not have a school system if we had no children. Those, that has to be at the forefront of all the decisions that we make, is how are we educating our children? And I just think that we also need to be respectful of each other, even if we have different opinions. And then look at ways that we can solve problems differently, by using innovation, ideas that maybe we've not thought about. And then give us an opportunity to address those things in a timely manner. And I just, again, I am thankful for our teachers, for our school system, for our parents and our community that supports this, this great school system. And I think that we will overcome this, and we will be better for it.
Mr. Fur?
Yes, I'd just like to say, you know, it's unfortunate that we're here, and, and I hopefully will, will look back next week and think, okay, it didn't go as we thought. But, you know, I've been working coaching kids for over 40 years, and, and my main focus, just like Demi said, has always been on the kids and what's best for the kids, and that's not going to change. And I've got enough respect and, and confidence that, that our teachers are, will do what's right. That's all.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, there was, there were some questions. First of all, you know, everybody's saying, well, the, our schools are the safest. They are doing an excellent job with the clean, but there are still some areas where we, we do have problems. Like when the children are at lunch, when they have their, their snacks and everything, they're taking off their mask then, so we, we don't have the protection we need at that time. Our EC classes, that's, that's another problem, the self-containment ones, and the preschool special needs, they're not able to wear masks, or they can't social distance it in, in a lot of those classes. So we don't have that protections, you know, that, that we need to have. And you're saying, well, we, we've got all the, you know, we're doing all those type things, so we're not, we don't have those protections at that time. So, you know, we do have areas where not, we're not doing all those things. So we, we still have those problems. And, and those individuals that are in those classes, we do have those problems. And this is a question that I want to ask, and I, I was told, that those temperatures, they're not taken till after the children get to school, is that correct? So if a child has gotten on the bus and they're, they're not feeling good, or they've got a temp, you don't know that till you get to school. So they could have, have spread the virus to all those children on the bus, is that correct?
Dr. Lauter?
Any answer?
So the students are, and the parents are basically doing an attestation form each quarter, I believe, that says that they're going to take their child's temperature before they get on the bus. So do they take the temperature as they get on the bus? No, there, it was time prohibitive, it would have obviously extended the bus route much, much longer to kind of have to stop who was going to take the temperature. So they're saying that they're taking the temperature and they don't have one when they get on the bus. And then as soon as they get off the bus, then yes, they've, their temperatures are taken. And if for some reason they have a temperature, then they're, you know, pulled out and then called a parent.
We don't have any kind of numbers or anything about children that did have it, and then we had to do anything, or we don't have any kind of numbers of the ones that did have it once they got off the bus, do we?
No, I mean, individual schools made, I mean, I think, I can just tell you anecdotally from talking to principals, are there lots of, you know, large numbers? No. But are there some students that have, you know, have had a temperature when they got off the bus? Yes. But again, they're immediately isolated and they call a parent, and just because they have a temperature doesn't mean that they have COVID. So that would be how, you know, it's handled as they step off the bus.
With that, but again, I want to thank every, but that's, that's one of the concerns. And again, I still have the same feelings I had last Monday. I really feel we need that little extra time, you know, until the end of the month. And my feelings have not changed, and I just feel we need that little extra time. But again, I thank every, what everybody has done. And again, I do respect- But again, I thank every, what everybody has done, and again, I do respect every one of, of you individuals, and I know this is a tough time for everybody, but again, I just really feel strongly about this. And thank you again, and I think we should follow, well, and somebody had mentioned the Duke study and UNC study. Again, you can find a study or something written about everything to suit your needs or what you want it to say, and again, that did not take into consideration what the, it be, us being a red county, or about what our, how the rates being as high as they are. And again, if you dig long enough, and you, and, and, and read long enough, you can find anything to suit your needs. That's all I can say. Same way with numbers. You can, you can dig long enough and, and get numbers to be anything you want them to be, and I, I've, I've been around long enough and know that, so.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Ms. Blackwell, do you have?
Ma'am, check, and I have one thing I should have added on the bus, just to add to what we said. So, part of the, I didn't answer Ms. Carpenter's question there, when we've talked about bus capacity and how long it would take to do routes, it's because on a passenger bus, they usually sit 66 students. Right now, we're only running 22 of them. So, when a student gets on the bus, they're still socially distanced, they're sitting in every other seat, and they're wearing a mask. So, that should, can, Ms. Carpenter, can I say that that totally prevents transmission on the bus? Absolutely not. But it is the same criteria we're using. Students are six feet apart or more, and they're wearing a mask on the bus, so we certainly don't think there's much of that going on.
So, I asked one other question. You know, when we're talking about sending students back and everything, the one group that, and, and that's one thing I was wanting to find out, you know, with the basic, basic education, it says we have to treat all students the same with basic education, that everybody is do a sound and basic education. It says all, A-L-L, all students. But if something happens and we had to change, is there any way, because I know with all this, and I, I've read numerous emails and everything, and I know that our students that seem to have the most, most difficult time are our exceptional students and our students, the autistic students and the, the special need students, especially with the online learning. I mean, they just, that's, I've read that more and more from our parents, that they are the ones that have the most difficult time, and they do better, of course, with the, the face-to-face. And this may be an attorney question. If, if something would change dramatically and we would say, okay, we're going to change this, is there a way you could say, okay, we're going to take our exceptional children in a certain group, and say, we're going to go ahead, and they can go so many days, or we're going to let them stay on Plan B or Plan, whatever plan? Can you do that, or is that out of line? You can't do that.
Yeah, this is Brian Shaw. The issue of EC or special education students is one of the most difficult issues that's arisen because of this COVID situation. Of course, there's a federal obligation to provide free and appropriate public education. That overrides any state law. So, we have a mandate to provide a free and appropriate public education. What is uncertain is what type of leeway, if any, is going to be given to school districts as they try to deal with public safety and social distancing. There are a number of lawsuits throughout the country, and we're going to have to see how those play out. One possible answer is going to be that whatever we do, whatever we do not fulfill now, we're going to have to fulfill later with compensatory education at a significant expense. Going to your particular question, I think-
Brian, I hate to interrupt you, but most people would not understand what that means. Can you define that just a little bit differently?
Well, compensatory education? What I mean is, school district has an obligation to provide services, those are individualized, based on the individual child's needs. A team determines what special education services are needed. If it is determined, and there's a legal process to do this, if it's determined that a school district does not provide the special education services that the child is entitled to, then the school district can be sued and can be ordered to provide compensatory education or make-up services, to make up for the time and the services the child did not receive. And that's one of the big issues being talked about, because we all know that certainly during the spring, a number of students, EC students, didn't receive any services or hardly any, as school districts were trying to, and I'm not speaking Cabarrus particularly, but as school districts were grappling with this new issue, how do you provide those services? During this school year, the 2021, school districts are providing services, but a lot of parents and their attorneys are saying they are, they are not sufficient. And we just will have to wait how those play out. But it may well be that school districts will be on the hook for extra or supplementary make-up services. That's where your compensatory services are, to make up for what the student should have received but did not receive. Going to Ms. Carpenter's particular question, I think there certainly are possibilities of crafting resolutions that apply one rule to EC students and another rule to non-EC students. And the difference would be because the reason, if that's not discrimination in favor of EC students, it's an effort to comply with federal law that requires special services for EC students. So, there are a number of school districts that will say, we're in Plan C, for example, but EC students can come on a Plan B or a Plan A arrangement. I've not heard that challenged, and I think a school district would have a good defense, saying, we're just trying to comply with the federal obligations. So, yes, I think it can be taken into account. It's a careful consideration, that's where I'd look to the administration, to see what is the plan, what recommendations are there, should there be special accommodations for EC students, and what should those be? And the EC would certainly be the, Department, and Dr. Ladd would be the first group to look at that very carefully.
Yeah, and I would just say, it's, it's important to say that, you know, obviously, all of our students are a challenge. Students with learning disabilities are a challenge, and, and certainly in this environment, but the school district, our school district, every school district, is working with the Department of Public Instruction, working with Rachel Hitch, who is one of our attorneys that's a specialist in EC, to make sure that we're following all the requirements as they all relate to exceptional children.
Thank you very much. So, Brian, just to detail that just a little bit further, so the general public understands a little bit better. So, if those challenges take place, and that's probably where we're all going to go before this is over because of the time and, and just the, what else going on with education period. So, when that challenge is taken, tasked for Cab, just for Cabarrus County Schools, because that's who we're concerned with, where are the charges made? Who is sued for that?
If a parent of a special education student has a concern about provision of services, sometimes the dispute is whether the child is eligible or not. Sometimes the, there's an agreement that the child is eligible, but there's a dispute as to what the appropriate level of services are, what is the, what is the IEP, Individualized Education Program, contain? And sometimes there are disputes as to whether the plan is being implemented properly. Well, in all those circumstances, that can be raised with school people, and, but ultimately, a complaint can be filed with the Office of Administrative Hearings in Raleigh, and the parents would be entitled to a due process hearing, we call it. And every parent is given the Handbook on Parents' Rights, every parent of an exceptional children student, and those detail, those procedures are set forth very clearly in the Handbook on Parent Rights. If a parent has any questions about that, or somehow just had not received a handbook, then certainly contact the EC Department here, and they would be provided a copy.
And for the new board members, I know all of you are just going through your school board one-on-one, if that's challenged in court, who literally respond, who literally is considered the literal responsible party in the, the school district?
It would be a lawsuit. It's not in the court system, it's in the North Carolina Administrative Procedure Hearing, but it would be, let's say, student J.S., let's just use them as fake initials, anonymous initials, against the Cabarrus County Schools, or against the Cabarrus County Board of Education. So, it's the Board of Education would be the respondent, and would have to defend itself. And if there is, if the parent wins, then it's the school system that is obligated to pay to the parent or provide the services that are required. It all depends on what the, what the judge awards. But it's against the school system.
I think that was a couple of the questions from board members, that they wanted to know who is the responsible, responsible party that really, truly, at the end of the day, will answer for any type of charges against the school system if we are not found to provide a sound education.
Well, I was, that's a, a good distinction, I was just going to follow up on that. If it's a failure to provide special education services, then the Cabarrus County Schools is the responsible party, the defendant. If there is a claim that the Cabarrus County Schools is not giving a free, appropriate, a sound, basic education, that's not EC, that's just every student. That could be filed against the Cabarrus County Schools, but the real defendant is the state of North Carolina, and the courts have ruled that the state is responsible for failure to provide a sound, basic education.
Board members, and especially the new ones, do you have any questions about that? I know that was a couple of little items that came out of your school board one-on-ones that may not have been quite clear. Do either of you have any questions? Okay, good. Ms. Blackwell?
Yep, so actually, there's a couple of things. I did want to respond to Ms. Carpenter about the, the numbers, and that they can be used and tweaked to meet your needs. I would just like you to know that that works both ways in both situations. I think that there's numbers, there's metrics on both sides. Dr. Ladd has already pointed out that in the time that we were in Option B prior to Christmas, there at this point has been no proven transmission in school in Cabarrus County. And I do think that that is important, that is an important piece of information. I also want to point out, Ms. Carpenter, your question about EC children, two weeks ago, I want these EC children to be back in school four days a week, all grades, six through 12 included. It's important for them. They are not thriving well in this type of environment. I've heard it time and time again, and that is something that we really, really need to make sure that we are focusing on. I also want to point out, and this hasn't really been discussed, but Kids Plus has been going on since August. They have been running and have about 200 to 250 children a day in Kids Plus. And from my understanding, they have been doing it without any kind of transmission during that time as well. And so, this, this is legitimate information that we have in Cabarrus County with our school system. This is important information that we need to be taking into account. These are the reasons why we have chosen to go to Option B, because at this point, we know that it is a safe environment for children to go to school.
So, I will just touch on a couple, a couple of different clarifications. I know Ms. Carpenter had asked. We were just getting those results from those surveys this past Monday when we were preparing for the meeting. So, the, I know that they did come out, you know, to each one of you, but, and I'll stand noted for any type of corrections if this is not quite accurate, but for the general public, just so that you understand, those surveys came back that it was a total of 69.5% of parents wanted their kids back in school, 50.8 in A, and 18.7 in B. So, at some point in capacity, they want their children back in school. 30.5, C, for remote learning, and of course, that's always an option for parents, you know, that stands no matter which plan we're in. Then with the teacher survey, 63% in C, 23% in B, which is the two days in-person learning and three remote, and 14 in A, which would be the four days. But that also shows that 23, 37% of the teachers were wanting to be back in, in school in some form or capacity as well. So, if you put those together, you know, that, that's a huge population between parents and teachers that want their kids back in school. And I think that's more of a positive way to look at it. I think one of the questions that come from several of you, and, and, you know, I've, I've been sent a couple of text messages about the board chair calling a special meeting based on personal reasons, but I'm your facilitator and your mediator. When you have questions and you feel like there is something that's not been clarified, and we need a special meeting to make sure things are, our items are clarified in the community, that's what we have to do. We want parents to be real clear what's going on, we want teachers to be real clear what's going on, we want to be proactive to any type of situation that might take place that would get us into some serious situations, once January, January 19th gets here. But I also want to make sure that we are real clear on what January 19th actually looks like. Are there any other questions or comments from board members, any other clarification points? Ms. Sandich, I'll let you go first.
We may have discussed this already, but I just want to make sure that we have, if there are individual schools that are having issues with coverage or having issues with COVID-related things, who has the authority to close those schools? Do we have to meet again? Is that even an option? I just want to make sure if that had been discussed.
So, that actually was brought up with the prior board, and Dr. Ladd, we actually spoke about that. We've, this board has never discussed what it would look like if we wound up with some type of cluster in a school where that would be necessary, that the superintendent really would have to take some type of action. And that's probably something that we should have talked about a little bit prior to tonight so that he would be prepared. But are you prepared to make a statement on what that, that really would look like if we wound up with a cluster in a school?
Yeah, I don't think it's just if there's a cluster. I mean, from the beginning, we work with the Health Alliance to, again, talk about positives, talk about contact tracing, quarantine people, and so if we have a school that either the, the Health Alliance and/or the faculty believe that there is transmission going on in a significant way, then we would close the school. And if we have, and if we have a cluster, I think we have to close the school per the, the state guidelines for two weeks, I think.
That means moving everyone to Plan C, right?
What's that?
When you say close the school, you're actually still educating the students, just virtually, right?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a good point. So, we're talking about if we're in A or B. And so, if there's a cluster, then what has happened, we have not closed the school yet, or we have not stopped letting people attend in person, I guess, to Mr. Walter's point. If we did that, then usually that's for two weeks, and then they come back after that. Lots of districts around us have done that. I think you guys have talked about Union County being in A, they've probably done it more than anybody else in our area. And the other thing that would happen is if there is, there are so many people that are quarantined, that it would be difficult or impossible to, to teach face-to-face. So, let's say tomorrow or on Tuesday, we had a elementary school that had, you know, 35 faculty people that were out because of quarantines, then we would also say, well, that's just too many, so let's go remote for two weeks and then hopefully bring that back up again.
So, there's already a process for that, that has been agreed upon, is what I hear?
Yeah, again, we work with the Health Alliance, where if they say, yeah, we think there's a health concern there or possible transmission, so let's just, you know, not let anybody be in the building for two weeks, or again, if we just have personnel constraints so much that we can't open the school, or feel like that, that more kids are going to be remote anyway because we're doing it, then we would just say, let's just go all remote for two weeks and then come back up.
I think one of the questions that came about, and I'm not sure which one of you asked earlier, if the cluster took place, and I know with the Health Alliance, they have a lot of guidelines, if the cluster took place, would the whole school have to close, or would just that, those couple of, that class or those couple of classes that had the actual issues? I think that was a little bit of the confusion.
Yeah, cluster, again, is five related cases, meaning that there are five, five or more cases that are in the same location that seem to be related to each other, like because they were in contact with each other, and, and I'm pretty sure, although I don't have it in front of me, that that's a state guideline. So, when there's a cluster, it actually has to be reported to the state, there's a list that's available on the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services website of all the clusters in public educa, and private education, actually. And- website of all the clusters in public education and private education, actually, and, well, all education settings, that has to be reported, and my understanding is that always they go all remote for two weeks, and then they come back.
So, just with a couple of clarification points, and I'll point out what Ms. Carpenter actually stated, as we were moving through this, and we actually had this discussion on Monday night, this is what we talked about. You know, we all expected after the holidays, and people were out, and having activities and doing the things that they have been doing, that these numbers would go up, and of course, they did. But they seem to be either somewhat staying the same at this point in time as of today, if what came down, even though there's been a larger number in some areas. But we were hoping that those would start to do a downward trend, if you will, and hopefully, as we move through these Monday updates, that that will look even better. We don't know. We are reacting to whatever takes place within the community. We do know that it's not within the school system. We're monitoring it just as closely, as we stated, Dr. Lauter and I are on a call every Monday morning, so we get those updates. And if we have to react, I think the general public understands that there are just times that we do have to react, and we need to make futuristic plans to give these parents some type of schedule to be able to work with for childcare and what they have going on in their lives, and we're all doing the best that we can. I think it's one side of the equation that we get it, that there's a lot of fear out there about what takes place in schools, or what you really don't know, just what you think may happen, and we understand that. But we've got to get these kids back in school. We've got to start somewhere. You know, it's been 10 months. Our lessons learned should be put into practice now. We need to make sure that we're looking forward to what we do. We will not know what's going on until we get back. We need to see what that's actually going to look like. If things aren't looking well, we may have to do something different. If the governor makes a different decision, we may have to do something different. We wait on him. You know, that's why the decision was a little bit more difficult Monday night to say, you know, exactly what we were going to do past January the 19th, because we weren't sure what they were going to do. But they said it's good to open up schools. So, you know, we're taking direction from a lot of different sides, and I'm not sure who said it, but we do get a lot of data from a lot of different perspectives and a lot of different agencies. So, you know, we just want the general public to understand that we are doing the best that we can, trying to make the best decision we can for all those involved. And according on to where you sit, you know, sometimes that looks one way versus a different, another one. But we are trying to make really, really good decisions based on, it's just a whole different ballgame to know that we might have people to not show up for work for these kids that are going to be there for their first day, and it causes us an even, you know, more critical situation than we're already dealing with staff when it is, when we're talking about quarantining and the things that we deal with, a very small substitute pool. So, we're not sure what it's going to be, but for right now, unless this board is willing to make a different decision, we are going to open in Plan B, which means students will return two days a week with a three-day remote, and if there's anyone else that has any other comments, I would like to hear them at this time. No one? Ms. Carpenter, Mr. Fur, any last comments?
No, thank you.
Thank you. So, with that, I'll just ask for a motion to adjourn, unless Dr. Lauter would like to make any further comments or statements.
No, I'm good.
Mr. Shaw?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Thank you, and with that, we will say goodnight to the viewing audience, and we will see you at our regular scheduled work session in February. Thank you, and I would like to remind all of you that our retreat is scheduled for January the 23rd. Goodnight, and thank you.